First on the agenda is Billings Park Commission interviews is Jacob here? Do you want to come on up to the?
Chair there.
I'll bug it.
I.
Hey, we. We have your application here and. We've read through it. Do you want to just give a little bit of a summary about yourself? And you're interested in the Billings Park Commission?
So first of all, Jacob, between y'all, I grew up on Long Island, by no means imagination, a conservationist paradise. But I fell in love with the outdoors, our mentalism and the underground acts. So I. Figured out where to go to college, which was obvious, college in the hills of Dartmouth. So he was lucky enough to come up here. Well, as a Dartmouth, I worked on a trail crew in Appalachian, on the Appalachian Trail in New Hampshire. So we made trails for summer, studied sciences and during COVID, my fiance and I got a place in, or rented a house in Norwich. And so for a year, we actually basically never set foot on Dartmouth's campus versus the community. We wanted to figure out a way to stay after we graduated because she left it up here. We graduated and kind of place here in Woodstock and the drop this house was that it's across the street from Billings Park. And so now I work at Dartmouth, I work in a climatology lab. But pretty much every other day, if I'm more, I walk around the park with my dogs and I love it. And so I think that. Over the years, I've developed these skills of trail building and having with GAS and other things, I think I could put them to really good use, help preserve the park and. Promote its responsibility, sustainable use for generations going forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Jimmy, have you been to any meeting?
I guess I was hoping to go to yesterday's, but I had to, I was down on Long Island yesterday for a doctor's appointment I got up last night.
We'll be able to make the meetings.
Or your doctors.
All right, thank you.
Great, I appreciate it.
And is Sarah, it looks like she's on her screen. Do you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself?
Hi there. Sorry, I can't be joining you in person, long workday. My name is Sarah. Nice to meet you all virtually. My name is Sarah Goldfine. I am a local physical therapist here in town and I also teach at River Valley Community College. So I sort of have a lifelong commitment both to education and to the importance of movement and doing so in the outdoors. So the Billings Park Commission position really spoke to me because it sort of marries my two. Interests in preservation, education, and also in just staying active. And just like the previous gentleman who spoke, most days you can find me doing something in the park, whether it's hiking in summer. Or cross-country skiing or mountain biking on the peg trails in summer. So I'm just really looking forward to continuing to give back to the community because that's what I really love. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. And have you been to a meeting?
I did. I went to last month's meeting. It seems like a great group. They've got a lot of neat irons in the fire and it's a great group.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, do we want to?
We have two vacancies and two applicants. I would move that we appoint Eric Goldspine and. Jacob out to be Billings Park.
I'll second that.
Motion by Susan, second by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, Carrie. So that motion carries. We have an interview is Justin Quinn. Justin Quinn, if you're here, if you'd let us know.
He's on Zoom, but. Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
All right, there you are. So we have an application for you for the Conservation Commission? And if you.
That is correct.
A little bit about yourself and your interests here?
Yeah, I grew up in Woodstock, went to Woodstock Union High School. I'm a third generation Woodstock resident. My grandfather had a dairy farm on Prosper Road. Where my father then built. His house on adjacent property, which was then given, which was given to him from his father, my grandfather. And so I have a long family history of in Woodstock and want to see it moved in a more. A delicate direction, I guess. In trying to keep more of our, our historical values with farming and sugaring and logging. With also knowing that needs, that needs to be some development in order to keep everyone prosperous moving forward. So that's kind of where I'm at, like just want to be having more of a, an active stand on, on our community and how everything moves forward.
Thank you. Any? Any questions?
Have you been to any of their meetings?
I have been to a couple conservation meetings and I've just sat in as just a. Person of interest for my, because my father's been on the commission for quite some years. But just sat in just as someone to, to learn when I was much younger. So, but yeah, I've been to a few other meetings in the recent past. Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to point Justin question.
Motion by Ray, second by Susan, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. We're all set with interviews. We have a couple addition, additions and deletions. We have the file figures from the EEI loan from last meeting, so they fit that under all this right before the ARPA survey discussion. Actually, I think that's the only. The only addition. Are there any citizen comments that are for anything not on the agenda tonight? Yeah. Eric, do you want to receive your manager's report?
Yeah, just a few things I want to touch on today. One, as I spent a few days last week at a conference in Burlington, the National City Managers Association. Very good to be out there with other people to kind of talk about issues we're having across the country. And kind of really just having a chance to talk to the people in the same position and what they're facing and how we can. Work together. So that was very useful and I look forward to more of those conferences, time and budget wise. In the, in the future. Second, one of the things I've been trying to do when they got to Woodstock is try to form a better sense of a community with all aspects of what happened in Woodstock. With that in mind, I've had a few conversations with members of the school districts about how we can kind of work together and have more conversations. With that in mind, they want to invite myself and a board member from both boards to a meeting on May 1st. Just kind of introduce ourselves and kind of start the conversation of how we can work together and how our interests, you know, can combine. So that's May 1st at 6:30. So we don't decide now, but if a board member or one of the ones willing to attend with me. I'm going to ask the same of the trustees, maybe very good opportunity for us to kind of show our support for them and hopefully vice versa. Third, we have finalized the meeting for the annual audit. So on May 2nd, we'll have two meetings, one for the trustees and one for the select board. Starting at 6:30 where the audit will come to report the findings on the FY22 audit and then answer questions from the boards. So it'll be again on May 2nd at 6:30 here in Town Hall. Fourth, I've reached out to our local representatives to. Help facilitate and we have our federal representatives come to Woodstock to take a tour of the main wastewater facility treatment. And have an idea of what we're doing and what we plan on doing going forward. And hopefully to try to secure some funding from them to offset the costs. I did that today. I haven't heard back yet, but hopefully that can work itself out or at least. Trying every avenue we can to keep, you know, the, the cost down for that. Finally, myself and Mark Hunter had a meeting with the state yesterday. A number of years back, Woodstock and the state agreed to look at an issue by. Bay Side Lodge, Bay. Yeah, there's a culvert there. The Woodstock agreed to pay about $15,000 for design study. That study was done and what they found out is the work they have to do is right next to a sewer line for the town owns. And based on state statutes, the town has to pay for the costs of that water sewer line being for the work to be done. The cost is about $150,000. And if the state decides to do the work, which they tend to do at this point, the town will have to cover the cost of that money. So I've talked to the, to the state about different ways we could possibly finance that and I'm looking into other avenues to find funding to kind of help offset the cost of that. Their timeline is to put a bid out in November. And then with the work starting in May or June of next year. So, and they're, they also agreed to come to in front of the board and discuss their work if the board want that to happen as well. So those updates.
Thank you.
If there's no questions on updates, we can move to the finance reports. I apologize, the members got the finance court just this morning, just due to some issues we had internally. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to go over it. My projections still have the town coming in around $60,000 in a surplus at year end, based on salaries and everything else. That number obviously will change as expenses. Go with the rest of the year, but at this point, as of today, we'll look at it in a pretty good situation here, positive. But if anything changes, obviously let the boards know.
Thank you. So the, we have softly good outside consumption permit and Shine Associates. Woodstock Beverage Second Class for tobacco.
Can I just hop in here quickly?
Yeah.
So Susan Ford and I have been trying to get more information from the state on how the legal license are presented. Susan has done a lot of work on her own, try to get some of these answers answered. And I honestly have been playing phone tag with the person who stayed the last two days. So every time I call her, she's at the office, Michelle's meeting at the office. But so we are working on a solution to try to get the board more information on why the permits are not as filled in as they used to be. And once we have that, we'll obviously give it to the board so they can have all the information.
Thank you.
Next.
So I think, I think if we just follow suit for the last couple of months.
I make a motion to move softly good roadside. And Shine Associates. Woodstock Beverage for class two tobacco.
Now, I could add that it's subject to our understanding states reviewing the permit application since we're not able to.
Yep. So permit to approve softly good and shine associate subject to state review. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, those are approved. So I saw Eric Lafayette on there earlier. Is he still?
Yeah, he's there. Yeah.
Hey, everybody. Sorry about that.
So if we want to dive into the. Let me pull up the.
Eric, do you have the PDF that you sent us? Would you be able to share your screen with that?
Let me just double check. Do you guys want me to pull up the actual lease terms that I sent you over?
The. I think we were, we talked mostly previously about the 10-year finance option. It looked like there was a 10 and a 15 was I.
That, yeah, that, that's pretty much what it boiled down to. Was what option you guys ultimately wanted to take? Was it the 10 or the 15-year option? And I think what we were looking at is, let me just pull open. So I can share my screen if that's. Share. The host has disabled it.
All right, Nikki, are you there?
So on the, on the 15-year lease, you're looking at a 4.99% interest rate with annual payments of $62,344 a year.
You should be able to share now.
Okay, great. I, we've already gone over the projects, all the different scopes of work that's associated with, in the ECM matrix. We took a couple items off from the list during the last meeting and updated the price. So the final price came out to. The 647,550. With, and then we went out, we went out to municipal leasing services that solicits prices from multiple banks and they came back. With these two options, one at a 15-year, a 4.99% interest rate over 15 years and the other one. Was a 10-year option with a slightly lower rate. And this was really the last piece that we needed to finalize the, the deal with you guys. And we're just curious what term you ultimately wanted to move forward with.
So just a brief summary. The 10-year, the difference between the 10-year and the 15-year is about $20,000 a year. It's the 10-year, you pay $20,000 more a year. But with the 15-year, you end up paying about $1,000 more overall to cost the project.
Thank you for doing that. I mean, I think I favor the 10-year just because of the. Savings, but.
We put money in the budget for this question?
Yes, I believe so. For the first, a, a, what, $8,000 was allocated on budgets for this current, for FY24.
Yeah, I think the 10-year makes sense.
How much money, excuse me, how much money did we budget each year?
It would just been for the FY24 and I believe it was around 80, around 8,000. So close to the 10-year.
And how much do you put in the capital plan for this?
I would have to look that. I'm not sure.
Given how, given how much we don't have, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't do the 15-year lease.
I don't know that this would have been on the capital plan because this was from the.
It was.
It wasn't a.
I believe so. We knew about this work when the capital plan was done two years ago.
Oh, I don't think.
It would be really helpful if things like this came before the finance committee because we have some information, but then we come to this meeting and we're not prepared because we don't know about these things. So I could call up the plan from two years ago, but actually it hasn't been updated.
Although during the entire presentation of this plan, the discussion has been on a 10-year. 10-year note, 10-year lease. So nothing's, nothing's new with doing a 10-year on us.
So what's the net present value of a 10-year lease versus a 15-year lease?
I don't have that. We don't have those numbers in front of us.
No, but, but he did, Eric did mention that it's about $100,000 total difference. So in the.
That's the cost. That's not the net present value. It doesn't.
Yeah, I don't have the net present value of them. No.
So I think John is here too and might back me up or not over the different financial view, but. Net present value is often a way of making these decisions and without that, I hate to make, not to make this decision today, but. Finding 20,000 extra years is not the easiest thing for us to do.
What's the, there's a question on the floor. Roger, if you want to go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm very confused. I thought we were talking about ARPA?
That's coming next.
Okay, so what are we talking about? I don't see it on the page.
That's, we added at the beginning of the meeting. This is. This is the. Ballot measure from last year for the energy efficiency. And these are the final numbers that were carried over from last month. We wanted to get these numbers in so we get the rates. Before, you know, before they go up again. That's, that's why we added it. John, go ahead.
Well, I do, I think that it would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that hard offline for Eric to, you know, to do the, the calculation. The finance committee could help him. I mean, I'm thinking about our Eric or, or Eric Lafayette, either Eric. Or the finance committee, any of us could do it. We just need to know the interest rate and that would. The interest rate for the, for the two options, that would allow us to calculate which one is quote cheaper. I, I think, you know, but there is also a question of timing, you know, like. A 15-year mortgage is more, is anyway, sure, we could figure out which one. Is less expensive over time, taking into account the time value of money, which is what NPV does.
Yeah, John, we do have those rates. I forwarded them over. The 15-year was just slightly higher, 4.99%. Whereas the 10-year was 4.97%. So actually the rate is, is very close between the two.
That's really surprising actually, but that's, yeah. I, I can't, I guess I can't really. I can't really do it in my head. I, I. I guess I don't, I, so I.
If, if, John, if I suggest something, there'll be a select board meeting in two weeks. You know, we have the numbers, myself and friends can make a sit down in the next week and a half, run these numbers and then have the finance committee present the two numbers to the select board at the next meeting. And that could be a compromise.
That, that sounds great.
Okay.
And we have a meeting scheduled actually, Eric. So that's perfect. Thank you.
That sounds great. These, just so you guys are aware, these interest rates, they hold for 30 days. And I believe this was issued as of Friday, the 14th. So we have until essentially. May 14th to be able to execute this lease agreement under the same terms.
Can I also, it, it just something that you may probably have already considered. I have not been following this conversation over the various meetings closely. But the state announced and Eric, our Eric Duffy, you probably know this better than I do, but the state announced about a week ago, an 80 or $90 million pot of funds. They were looking to lend to make low interest loans. You know, for base, for various priorities like housing, I would assume energy efficiency might be one of those. And those are much lower interest rates. Do you know, do you know that program and would this, would this apply or we can deal with.
I know the program. I don't know if this was applied, but this is also something that was voted on town meeting. So not to follow through, I, I think have to require another town meeting about. You know, we allocate the funds as well.
No, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just suggesting that we apply for, if, if we could apply for that loan, it might be a different way to finance it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
John, do you know who specifically was administering that? Was it Vida or was it?
I, I don't know. I saw the press release. I can, and Eric, it sounds like Eric knows about it. I'll get offline. I'll send that to, to both of you. I just need to find the email.
Okay, sounds good. Jennifer? No, he'll work with the finance comedian with Eric and there'll be a final singular recommendation, is my understanding, right?
Thank you for.
Thank you. So it brings us to the ARPA survey expenditure discussion. We have several items. Thank you. Several items with several presentations. These are ultimately going to be the decision of the select board. So we appreciate everyone coming down and presenting and providing information for us so we can make an informed decision. We'd like to keep the presentations to three minutes. So. Ray's going to kind of keep track and we'll start out. Okay. Going off of. Just to pick an order. The, actually a good place to start was, I'll just bring up, we had talked in the past about the fire department air packs. Chief Green gave me some numbers today. I forwarded them out. So the total unfunded amount for the air pack is 115, 840. So if we. So we'll take that off. When we're doing the final.
Yeah.
Final distributions.
I thought we talked about using funds, any funds that were left over from.
The building?
Building and. Short question, question budget if we had to.
Yeah. We just, we don't want to. Over expenditure on, on the ARPA, so we're going to account for at least this, even though it could go down again.
Right.
We've got the dam removal by Billings Pond, we can start with.
And I have slides that somebody has. If you want those to be pulled up, if not, we can just talk.
Nikki, you put those slides up, please?
Yes.
My name is Ron Rhodes. I live in South Pomfret and I work for the Connecticut River Conservancy. We're a nonprofit organization. We work in all four states, the Connecticut River. We're talking about ARPA, potential ARPA funds for the Billings Pond Dam Removal. The dam is just over there by the intersection of Elm and Old River Road. We've got a picture and a map of it that might be brought up here in a second.
Yeah, thank you.
So the issue here is the old dam that's no longer serving a useful purpose. It's not in use and it is blocking fish passage. It's blocking sediment transport. As you probably have seen over the years, there's a ton of sediment trapped upstream. So all of those fields flood all the way up in the, you know, Barn and Pomfret Road there. So the state of Vermont, Marie Goduto, who is our basin planner for the Onaguichi River. Years ago, she did a, what they call a stream geomorphic assessment and a tactical basin plan. And the brook is quote stressed for sediment. So that sediment buildup is impairing water quality. It has temperature impacts. So the temperature increases in that muddy area above the dam. And then of course, the aquatic organism passage, not just fish, but you know, most of us think about the, the brook trout that are in there. But just normal river flows. If we go to the next page or slide. We got a state grant, CRC got a state grant last year to hire Ripple Natural Resources Services. Matt Morosky is the engineer up in Randolph. We've done several dam removals together and he did a feasibility assessment, both on the Billings Pond Dam and then also the Gulf Coast Dam. And his, his main, so that's just a sketch, one of the pages I pulled out of the. Assessment he did. The next screen will show you, his conclusion is that it is a doable project. So instead of, you know, spending lots of money to find out it's a million dollar project, we, we do this initial work. His cost estimate is $290,000. That's to remove the concrete and the sediment. Or some of the sediment that's trapped behind the dam and then to restore the area back to a natural state. So anything that we disturb with an excavator has to be restored. So the tree plantings that happen after dam removals, et cetera. So all of that work, if we're able to get the engineering done this year and then the construction either next year or 2025. Usually dam removals are anywhere from a three to five year project.
So we're about three minutes.
Yeah, okay.
So I think with the timing of ARPA, the. It has to be voted on, you know, and designated this year and spent by 2026. Is there a portion of this that's upfront that you're looking at that you're asking for or is?
Well, we have engineering design costs this year, so that would be in the neighborhood of $50,000. And then the lion's share of the removal, you know, cost would be removal cost in 2024 or 2025. There's, as you might imagine, there's a lot of permits required, historic preservation, stream alteration permit from the state, US RV Corps of Engineers. So.
Okay.
And you have funding for this? Any funding or it's just?
We have some of our local members who are donors to CRC are helping us fund this initials. For example, we hired a contractor to start the historic preservation work. And then the state grant funded last year's assessment.
Okay.
And what will your fundraising numbers be beyond?
Yeah, so that's my job is to go out and find grants, right? So this is one possibility. We've got a proposal into the candidate family foundation. We have talked to Marie Goduto with the state about the potential for the same state grant that funded the initial assessment work last. assessment work last year, is that being a a potential? Because usually we end up with you know, four or five, six different grants, because you're not going to get two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
We get fifty here, a hundred and twenty five there. Piece together several of them to get project done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is
Oh, we have a question.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not clear on where this dam is located. It's uh Red Question National Park, right, sort of on the intersection of Elm and Old River. And who's the property? Uh, Woodstock Inn, Billings Farm, the foundation. Okay, and how much, how much of the project do they find? Good question. Uh, they are committed to helping with the uh dollars by the board, yeah, but that is they will be a contributor. I can't tell you a dollar figure. It's not and they realize.
Is, oh, yeah.
Could you ask the speakers to come up to the microphone, please? We can hear on Zoom.
Uh, so I just wanted to lend a voice of support to this idea, uh, which I think is a an excellent one. Now, the whole idea of restoring uh natural habitat, of course, as you know, it's very close to the heart of uh what we do at Ben's, so I'm just offering my support for the idea.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, is Alita?
May I ask a question about this one that you proposed, please?
Go ahead.
Is that any way that this is considered part of um the Mount Tom?
No, I don't, I think they said it was part of um Billings Farm property.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lena, if you want to say a few words, we've got the next item on the list would be improvements to Town Hall, to Town Hall Rejuvenation.
I'll be very brief. Um, I just wanna, um, and I'm actually going to read this because I want to make sure I cover all the points. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about the use of ARPA funds to be directed to the work of the Town Hall Building. As you know, I chaired the Town Hall Building Committee and was on the leadership team. And the leadership team did extensive research on the building's condition as well as provided visions for the future. Select Board will receive a detailed report uh from the Town Hall Building Committee at the May meeting. And reports generated to date will be included in your packets. Of course, there are competing interests desirous of the ARPA funds. But the sheer number of code violations, the lack of ADA compliance in the Town Hall Building should be a compelling reason to address at least some or even one of the building's pressing pressing issues. Today, work on the Town Hall rarely happens unless something is completely broken or equipment has become obsolete. Jill probably was members our years working on the HVAC system. The last renovation of the Town Hall happened in nineteen ninety eight when PenTango partnered with the town and raised funds necessary to rehabilitate the theater, the town offices and the bathrooms. That, of course, means that the bulk of the electrical plumbing and HVAC systems are thirty five years old. I urge the select board to consider using some of the funds. Now, since we both committees have solid cost estimates for work on critical infrastructure for the largest public space in Woodstock. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Was there any questions?
No.
For Alita?
No, you'll have a report in May.
Yes. Yeah, you'll get your packets, we'll get the combined research from the leadership team and the Town Hall Building Committee will be in your packets for the May meeting and the architects will give you a full debrief on May sixteenth, which I think is your next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Grouse and I'm the intermunicipal regional energy coordinator for Keyrock. And I just would like to request a copy of that report if I could, because we're also looking at grant options for this building. So.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, certainly. Mark, uh, we got some roadside additions and updates. Uh, do you want to come up? We've talked about um the need for on Peter Kinnehill at both ends for like a all wheel drive for all drive type cautionary and cautionary speed, like the orange signs for twenty five on Peter Kinnehill, and I think there's some other road signs around town that have been graffiti or sun faded.
Yep.
So kind of like, like ballpark, what's the sign go for? And do you think maybe for ten or fifteen, twenty signs, how much would we need?
Uh, they're roughly about fifty dollars apiece.
Okay, so we can get quite a few signs for. So do you think, you know, if we did like two thousand dollars or one thousand dollars to get?
Probably more than enough. There's plenty of uh poles in stock.
Yeah.
Department.
Okay.
When Mark says we reach my call a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty perfect. Um, I know we got the I remember seeing something about.
We did get one, one vote.
Well, then there's more outstanding then.
All right, we're trying, we're gonna, um, so the town version side of Brooklyn Engineer, um, they put together a design package. Uh, we're gonna solicit some more bids to try to see what we can guess, but Mark on his own, about one bid so far for lose for ninety thousand dollars.
Uh, at the top of my head, I think was right around four.
Road behind the high school.
Yeah.
It's roding into the river.
Yes, that was just in case people weren't.
Yeah, thank you, Susan.
How much? Four hundred. Four hundred.
And what grant possibilities, Fanny, are there?
I uh they're trying to work with Rita on that and uh there hasn't been anything that's going to come up in the in the future, so unfortunately.
All right, well, four hundred, that and some of the numbers we were talking.
Yeah, uh, Matt Bissel, the engineer, his his cost uh estimate around six.
Yeah.
Um, his, what he came up with, the engineer, um, I think it's a little over the top than what we need. Installing uh uh underdrain on the road and um repairing some of the catch basins there. There's a couple of catch bases right there, but um, the one contract, I met with two contractors, I only heard back from one. Uh, the one that hasn't submitted a quote, I called his office and I haven't heard back from him, so I'm not going to chase him. Uh, that's when uh Eric uh emailed that. I'm going to solicit, um, you know, some other contractors in the area.
Excellent.
So the first one's four ninety, three hundred, uh, just on that.
Excellent. All right, so thank you very much.
Mark also wastewater?
Um, yeah, yes.
Might as well.
Back in the hot seat. Yeah.
So you want to talk about the main wastewater?
I guess, yeah, I guess we have two wastewater things to discuss possibly or no?
Yeah, one being the the facade or the the overall uh appearance of.
So, um, I actually got designs today for the, so we're talking about the self Woodstock uh wastewater treatment. Um, there's been some conversation about it being a big concrete block. Um, what we've done and kind of make it.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but we cannot hear you.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, so the South Woodstock wastewater treatment, it kind of has a big cement block. Um, so there's been conversations of what we could do to make it look a little better, make it fit more into the environment where it sits. Um, so just today, we got the final designs from the engineers. Um, they got sent to the contractor to come back with a quote, a quotes on the three different designs. Uh, and once we have the quotes, we're going to do a public meeting uh to kind of show the three different quotes and the designs and have a discussion on what's the best road forward. So we can kind of have a a chance to kind of talk about what we want to do and how much money we want to spend. Um, and the quotes could come in at any point. I have no idea how much it's going to be. Um, so we'll see what that is.
All right. And then the other um discussion was just uh the overall project at the main plant, at the main plant, uh, let's see if I can find that.
So the the main uh plant is RC, a much larger project, uh, much higher cost. Um, RC much further out in in scope and construction. Um, but if the select board chose to use our funds for it, their planning things are happening now and going forward, uh, that would be wrapped into the loan that could be covered by our funds if so chosen.
And do we, I I know we got an email about the overall cost, but do we have a breakdown of some of the more immediate?
Yeah, it's so it's in the email I sent that has the whole thing, should have a breakdown of how everything's going, um, and how it'll be set up.
I think the attachment is probably page six or something.
Yeah.
But if you scroll down, but it doesn't tell us, it's, there's a breakdown, but there's not necessarily a breakdown of like like uh the chronology of the event.
Yeah.
Project.
And and part of that's uh based on how the board wants to move forward, um, and how we want to let their process outs. Um, when we expect to have a bond voted on and then approved, uh, will dictate how the rest of that thing plays out. I have nothing to add on.
Have we thought about a coat of paint?
What she said, was that you carried?
The farmhouse pottery building is a cement block and it's painted white. It's beautiful.
So I that that could also absolutely be an option. Um, this started uh kind of before me. Um, but we're looking at all different options from just a fence with, you know, some uh wind skipping on it to cover it to fully covering it in shingles. Um, my big thing is to get a cost on all of them to before making a decision. Um, and see what the overall cost would be and go from there. Um, so a compromise could be a bucket of paints, um, or it could be the whole thing, so.
Roger, just a point of clarification, um. We're not making any decisions.
No.
Okay, so so when when decisions are getting closer to being made, it'd be really helpful if we broadly disseminate the actual concrete costs of each one of these things, so we're not talking about
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Salad.
Um, we we expect to do that, you know, within the next month or so. We want, this is our starting point where we can start to get the numbers together.
Okay, and and also the whatever the final amount is as as the amount that we have.
We know that.
We know it's six sixty or.
Yeah, I can think of that number.
That's not being moving target, that's the.
Yeah.
We know how much we have, six hundred and something thousand. And the village has a separate amount.
Right.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, energy efficiency. Are you still online?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want to share your screen?
Thank you.
So Nikki knows to make them able to share us.
Are you ready to share?
See if I can do that already. Yeah. Thanks, Nikki.
Yeah. Slideshow, start slideshow, okay. Um, you know us, I'm Ginevra, um, the program director at Sustainable Woodstock. Michael's our executive director. We are here to present our um equal energy opportunities brawl initiative, so quick background, you can go to the next, um uh, from calculations performed by our um intermunicipal regional energy coordinator. About sixty percent of our households are low and moderate income. Many people can't afford efficiency upgrades like weatherization, heat pumps, solar, um, and beyond that, they can't actually afford heating costs just at a base level, as we saw this past winter, so this project will provide free energy audits to homeowners. Grants for health and safety upgrades that are needed in order to do energy projects, as well as grants of three thousand dollars for at least twenty five homeowners with things like weatherization, heat pumps and heat pump hot water heaters. This just shows who would be the target group for this funding, so it would actually be the second row there, the moderate income homeowners. That's just for the very, very basic reason that low income home homeowners are eligible for free weatherization in the state of Vermont already. So, of course, we're not opposed to working with those folks, um, to do that weatherization like heat pumps, but the focus group would be people who are low income enough to not be able to afford this themselves, but are not getting help from the state. Um, this is just a quick example of how that funding could be distributed. It's really dependent on what homeowners uh need. In total, it comes out to eighty two thousand eight hundred dollars. It, the first two not lines of numbers are the thirteen and twelve add up to the twenty five um grants of three thousand dollars. And then that the last, the third line with seventy eight hundred is energy audits, health and safety upgrades. And for match, we have fifty six thousand nine hundred sixty. This funding comes from grants from the Candidate Family Charitable Foundation and the Woodstock Area Relief Fund, now the Hub. These are finite sources, so we have this money and we've actually been doing these projects in Woodstock and surrounding towns. But we will run out and we will no longer be able to do them. Uh, we're very thankful for what we have been able to do. It's been really exciting to do this work for people who really struggled this past winter. And do you want to touch on this?
Sure, so uh, and these programs that we're talking about for the ARPA funding is uh working towards the goals of the town and the village of approved and the comprehensive energy plan, which are outlined here. Uh, that the town, uh, so the voters approved in the climate emergency and action resolution in two thousand and twenty. And ready for one hundred, which um at then municipal, I I mean, town manager Phil Swanson signed. And the Woodstock Town Plan, which supports non municipal programs to encourage uh, the town in terms of energy efficiency and reducing carbon based fuels.
We hit three minutes?
Yeah.
Go to the next one, ended on that.
Yeah, and we just provided this one.
This is an example of work we've done.
Well timed.
So I, are you asking, you you said that the cost was eighty two eight, but then you had um grants of fifty six nine, so are you asking?
Oh, that was match. So from us, we have, we are offering match in our time and from other grant sources that we have for this work.
And what um other fundraising are you doing to get this money?
Uh, we've got um another source of money coming. Um, let's see, I'm trying to think which ones we've got coming in.
Well, we've got our second round of the
The candidate.
The candidate funds coming in, that it's part of a two year grant that we've taken for this work.
So you also said something about surrounding towns, so are these funds for surrounding towns or just Woodstock?
The funds we have currently includes surrounding towns as well as Woodstock. This money would just be for Woodstock residents.
We're just targeting Woodstock in this proposal.
Um, and a great point to make, kind of related to ARPA itself, is that um, I looked up the goals of ARPA, the funding actually, and one of them was to fight the pandemic and support families struggling with public health, health and economic impacts, which we see a lot of this winter. Um, I think in this town and in Vermont.
Um, and if you got some ARPA funds, would the process be done by twenty twenty five?
Certainly could be.
Yeah.
If we had a deadline, yeah.
That would give us enough time. Um, we, this, so this is a several year project. We have also received some funding from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation and Vermont Community Foundation. Those funds have been spent up to this point because we've been working on an ongoing basis with households to um implement these energy efficiency projects already, but that's some additional funding that we've been working.
Okay. Any other questions? That's all I have. All right, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. An opportunity presented.
And that's actually. Yes, we got Thompson. Thank you for.
I'm Deanna Jones. We haven't met yet. For the Thompson Senior Center. And I don't have slides, but I'm gonna um read, which I don't normally do, just so that I can try to stay within the timeline. And I don't have slides, but I'm gonna read, which I don't normally do, just so that I can try to stay within the timeline. So thank you for this opportunity to be here. The Vermont age group of sixty five to seventy nine has increased by forty thousand people in the past ten years. Windsor County and Woodstock is increasing at an even greater extent than Vermont as a whole. With certain age groups projected to increase by over a hundred percent, more than doubling between two thousand ten and two thousand thirty. These trends are very visible at the Thompson with an increase in meals on wheels in the last ten years, going from five thousand eight hundred meals. To eighteen thousand meals on wheels last year. Given these trends, we should anticipate the demand for meals on wheels alone to exceed twenty five thousand and expect the primary population we serve to again double in the next fifteen years. The Thompson has a proven track record of being responsive to our community. And our service reach is over fifty percent of the population on the census for those age sixty five and older. While comparatively, the average reach of rural senior centers is eleven percent. We are already in the position of putting people on waiting lists. We've had to turn people away from holiday meals, Veterans Day lunches and programs. And we are at our capacity for the number of meals we can produce in our kitchen and the number of people we can welcome into our building. To that end, we need to renovate and plan to expand our kitchen, dining room and conference rooms to better serve our community. It's an eighteen one thousand eight hundred square foot addition and renovation of existing spaces. And in total, we need one point nine million for this project, which we anticipate to happen in phases. Action beginning first. We have already started receiving private donations and our board has committed invested funds and we are seeking grant funds for capacity building. But we need to reach out broadly to all available sources to make this project a reality. In closing, I'd also like to speak briefly to the point of how much town support for this project would mean not only literally. But also fundamentally to the Thompson. Many senior centers in Vermont and across the country are town departments relying on their towns for significant portions of their operating budgets. Including capital building projects and funding. In spite of significantly rising food and operating costs, we've not increased our requests to the towns we serve since before COVID. We asked Woodstock for only eight percent of our operating budget. And in the twelve years that I've been in this role as executive director, we've never asked the town for capital project or building funding support. A grant in any amount toward the first phase of our kitchen renovation and expansion would be immensely helpful. Towards our total goal and show town support for this critical service and growing segment of our population. And I have all of the details, including the budget and the phases and exactly what the project is for you.
Again, perfectly timed.
And of course, I'm happy to take questions.
I think.
Okay.
The only kind of sort of Eric's other question a minute ago was just per timeline, you know. This is something that you're looking at starting now. Is there something, a portion of the project that would be spent in twenty four or twenty five?
There is a portion that would be spent in twenty twenty four. We have started it and it's there's three phases. There was a dining room egress that's completed and we had the funding for that. The kitchen renovation and expansion is the next phase and we anticipate starting in twenty twenty four or twenty twenty three still. And then the third phase, as depending on the funding, would be the conference rooms expansion.
Okay.
Two questions on this. One. You know, with the new kitchen plan, how many more people could you serve? How many more meals could you provide? And then with all this renovation, would you have to increase your staff to then be able to provide all the services?
Yes, we would. We, if you see in that document, there's a existing kitchen. And then the highlighted portion is the new kitchen. Right now, the space really only allows for two staff members in that kitchen. And that's really why we're at capacity. We bring in a third staff member for big events. But we would have to put them on permanently.
Yeah.
So we do anticipate increasing our operating budget to staff this.
Okay.
And that's not part of the ask. We're just looking for the building funding.
Do you think you'd have to still turn people away if this was to expand?
I certainly hope not. The seating arrangement that's in in that document as well. Shows a couple of different layouts and putting much larger dining space on the first floor.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should note I'm on the board of the Thompson, so all when we get to discussing it, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. And was there any, did we miss anyone?
Or is anyone who's here that that wants to present who hasn't yet?
And are there any outstanding questions for anyone?
Just a question on your timing.
Could you mind if you just come up to that chair? Sorry, it's people online in here. Thank you.
Just a question on your timing and when you'll make your decisions.
It sounds like we're not going to hear about the town hall numbers till the May seventeenth meeting, meaning the earliest we could. Make a decision in June, right?
Yeah. Well, there's also, sorry. Do you have that online? At at any point, the select board can vote to allocate funds, so it doesn't have to be all at once. They can allocate as they see fit up until the money's spent. So you do it all at once. They could decide to do fund two projects next week. It's really up to how they want to use the money and they want to also have some money in reserve for an emergency that comes up within timeframe. So it's kind of, it can be all at once or it could be throughout, you know, the next year and a half.
And remind me what the total ARPA dollars are?
I have the full exact number, but it was about over six hundred thousand before we allocated a hundred and eighteen for the for the fire air packs. So it closes to five five fifty five hundred at this point.
So many worthy projects and not that much money at the end of the day.
It seems like a big number until you try to.
Placing it up.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate. That and we'll move. If I can find where my agenda is again.
Uh, new business.
Yeah, new business. So the mill school.
Yeah. This is. A recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to fund a grant for the mill school. This is the fifth, the mill school is a new childcare facility that is planning to open as early as June. To provide seventeen additional spaces on top of the seventy four approximately spaces that we had funded in our first four grants. Those seventy four spaces, by the way, are split roughly half and half between under three, zero to two. And pre after school, those are the two segments, particularly the under three is the biggest, is the area of biggest need. The after school is the second biggest. And so we funded those two areas, two for the former, two for the latter. This is the fifth grant. It's it's again for the zero to two. Seventeen spaces. They're asking for ninety four thousand six hundred seventy nine dollars and twenty cents, which is about. Thirty about a little bit more than a third, maybe thirty five percent of the total project cost of about two hundred seventy five thousand. We have the the main concern of the E D C. We had two concerns, but both were satisfied in our evaluation, which is why we're recommending the grant. The first was that they. The first was that there be sufficient demand. We had already funded significant expansion of capacity. We did a further analysis and confirmed that there are still, even with the additional seventeen spots, it will still still be. By our conservative estimate, at least three times that number of kids that are still not going to be served by our prior expansion grants. That's how big the demand is. So we satisfied that. The second is that unlike the first, the other four grants, which were given all to existing providers. This grant is for a completely new provider. And so we made the grant a contingent on. Three things. First, that they hire an experienced director, executive director that meets the state's requirements. Second, that they receive their license to operate. Those first two. That in order to receive a license, they have to have the executive director. So. That's a little bit of a duplication, but the license is the broader requirement. And third is that we would give them, release the funding as they. Register students. So we would give them one third of the funding. When they had, when they were serving six students, two thirds when they were serving twelve. And the remainder of the grant, the last third, once they started serving seventeen. And so given that our concerns were satisfied, we are excited actually to recommend this. I do think that this is. Likely to be the last childcare grant that we give for some period of time, since all of the organizations are now going to be. Working on spending the funds that we gave them in order to create the expansion, although some expansion has already happened. So that's our recommendation to grant the mill school ninety four thousand six hundred seventy nine dollars and twenty cents. To help fund their two hundred seventy five thousand dollar project.
The only concern that was raised to me is a certificate of occupancy. Fire chief wasn't certain that the building be able to accommodate seventeen children, so just. Any any motion would just be kind of contingent contingent on. Final certificate of occupancy.
Okay, that's fine. I believe that that I, well, I should say I assume. That the state license is contingent on that, but we will make that an explicit.
He wasn't sure what the. What the.
Is there a way to determine that before we spend money? Is there a way to determine whether or not it's capable?
We won't be spending money. Carrie, we won't spend any money until these, these qual, these requirements are met. So.
Okay, so this 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 bucket of money is not for the build out for any of those things.
No, it is for the build out. However, the grantee, the mill school has already been told, we told them at the beginning, because they were a new organization, that we would not. Even though it was for the build out. So they've arranged, they've arranged bridge financing and they're, they are taking on the risk. That they don't get a license, they don't get a certificate of occupancy, they can't hire the right person. And they understood that from the beginning. They they accepted that. We explained this before they applied. That we would likely be doing that, and that's what we are doing. So the town is fully, we we will not spend money unless there are six children in a licensed facility in a building that they're allowed to do it in.
And if I can just clarify, it wasn't. You know, a certificate of occupancy or none at all, it just, it may be a slightly reduced number.
Understood. Okay, I. Yeah, that's interesting because.
Thirteen students compared to seventy. I don't know quite how that works. It was just one concern.
Okay, well. Yeah, well, that that's interesting because. Because I think, for example, I mean, just in the extreme case. I think the E D C had, this is a problem for the E D C, not for you, and we'll come back and recommend, but if they came back and said it's no problem. We've got weak or now can do one child. Please give us the ninety four thousand dollars. I think we wouldn't.
Right.
Be happy about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I I think the, so I I think we'll. I'm going to suggest that that if you. If you approve this grant, that you add the qualification of the certificate of occupancy and that you give the E D C. The ability to adjust our recommendation or or pro make it prorata or make an adjustment to our recommendation if, once we find out what the capacity is.
Okay.
I think if you don't give us that authority, you've just approved the grant. So I would appreciate, and I think you would want to give us that that ability.
Yeah.
John, is there a time limit on when these requirements need to be met?
There is not.
Okay, so.
But they don't get any funding. They're taking the risk, so.
Okay, I, yeah, okay.
So could we put it off for a month?
I don't know that they would get the certificate of occupancy within, within the month. I don't know what the timeline for that would be.
Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but you don't disperse any money to the grantee. Except when they have, when they essentially tell you we spent this money on this thing. Is that correct?
Correct. And 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 in this case, not only will they have, they they will have spent the money before. That's correct, but not, but in this particular grant, it's not only that they spent the money, but that they're also serving the children. So in others, we're satisfying all of the, all of the risks. What we care about is that there are seventeen kids that are getting served. And and that the E D C believes that that's worth a grant of ninety four thousand dollars. I think if you. I rather than, rather than postpone the decision, Ray, I think you can accomplish the same thing without, what I don't want to do is to have their, their lenders get concerned. And not extend them the bridge financing. Which which they've, I think if you would, if we can just tell them what our requirements are. And I think certificate of occupancy is a perfectly reasonable one if it's not subsumed in the license. But I do think the E D C would like to have the ability to reduce the amount proportionally if if seventeen is not allowed.
I think that's really important.
So maybe you could just approve it on that basis that the grant, you would approve a grant. Of the hundred percent of the amount with a certificate of occupancy, if if that is equal to or exceed seventeen. And that you would reduce the amount of the grant prorata if it's less than seventeen.
Okay, so I think the.
It has to be seventeen plus staff, right?
The seventeen.
I think the seventeen is for the students, for the children. So I think staff is extra.
Which is why they reduced it. They were telling us twenty originally, and then they said, no, the occupancy includes the staff, so they reduced. The number of kids to seventeen. So that's right, Susan.
Okay.
So we need the certificate of occupancy for twenty.
Yeah, so if I could try to summarize this. So the motion would be. To approve the project contingent on a certificate occupancy that allows for at least seventeen students or children. And in the event that a certificate of occupancy is less than that, the E D C is authorized to adjust the amount. Prorata. Okay.
Amount down. Adjust the amount down prorata.
Yes, adjust the amount down for Rada.
Above seventeen, that's we're we're not prepared to give a bigger grant.
Yeah. Very good.
I just want to take before I I'm in full agreement with all of this. But I have been getting lots of emails from people from lots of different schools in town. And there has been some disharmony, I would say. And I am so excited to have new childcare facilities and new spots for children. This is. Critical for us to grow as a community. And I just wanted to be on record that I'm so excited for all of these organizations to work together collaboratively. Because that's how we all succeed in this small community that we're in. That's what I'd say.
Could I just add a brief comment? I I the E D C. Discuss this and endorse exactly the point that you're making, both our excitement and a desire. Which we made in a somewhat more pointed fashion than you did, a desire for these groups to. To work together in order to meet Woodstock's needs.
So the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aries?
Thank you.
Update from the advisory committee, Joe.
Yes, I have a, do you have the ability to share the slide or shall I?
I think Nikki can give you approval, or maybe I can.
I think I have it.
Yeah, you should be able to, Jill.
Thanks, Nikki.
Okay. All right, so I'm I'm here to report for the Investment Advisory Committee. The Investment Advisory Committee provides advice to the trustees and the select board on the Rockefeller Endowment Fund. This fund is one point seven million dollars. Its primary objective is to pay. The equivalent of the property taxes that were paid by the mansion. So this year contributed sixty six thousand to the town and ten thousand five hundred to the village. We put these. We try to manage the funds so there's adequate money to pay this money, these funds every year and to increase them by the amount that the property taxes go up. And I, we try to report to you every quarter. We don't always manage it. The money is invested in three places. It's in Vanguard Stock Fund. A Vanguard Bond Fund and the Vermont Community Loan Fund. And those three amounts add up to one point seven million. We we track performance against indices, so the first graph. Shows you how the stock fund has been performing against the. An equity index, and it's just been tracking it. That's what the index fund that we have. Invested our money is designed to do, so it's been doing its job. The bond fund tracks um. That we invest in tracks and a bond index. We've done better than that index on a couple of months. Primarily just due to the circumstances of timing. We took the money out of the bond. Our bond fund to pay property taxes in February, and that's when the bond market took a hit. And we had less money in it, so we did better than it. So we can report that the investments seem to. Are doing as well as the marketplace and have increased by five percent since September the thirtieth, which is the last time we spoke to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
There's no other other business. Uh, so Board of Sewer Commissions, and we have a sewer basement request from Sixth Swain Street. At William Badalana. Seems similar. This is pretty similar to one we heard last month, right, so.
Do we know how they got built last year? That, I mean, it must have been built the same way last year, right?
Yes, presumably. And it doesn't, he doesn't say it, but. Uh, Sixth St. Street sits up on London Hill. I can't picture which number is six, but.
It's not the first one that you see, but it's up the hill on the right, past the first. Past the, there's one on the right, one on the left. He's the next one on the right.
Okay. I mean, I just think we should be consistent.
Yeah.
And we haven't approved yet. Mister, what was it, Joe?
Yeah, I don't think I'm in a position to approve this one.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, what is this not the case that a property that is occupied by one person is being charged for? A two-person rate? I was trying to read, but I'm not sure I got it quite clear.
It's.
For like bedrooms.
So which system are we using these days?
It's, we we reverted to the original system for billing. And so in the event of no water meter. It goes to. Bedrooms.
Nikki, are you there?
Or does it?
I didn't think it did.
Or does it?
No, it's not bedrooms, it's occupancy, so single, double, and family rates.
Oh.
We talked about bedrooms and we backtracked.
Right, well, I guess in that case, we could actually prove. Last month's and this one, if they're both.
But do you, I guess my question is, do you do it mid-year or do you, I mean, because then you're, you budgeted for the money. I think that they have to come in and ask for the relief for the next billing.
Which is what Joe did last one.
Yeah, and I don't think we you guys did anything right.
We postponed it for discussion about what to do in the.
And I think at some point we need to address, because I think the problem is, you know, you bill people at the one person rate, and they're very quick to tell you when they're only one.
Yeah.
But they never tell you when they're two.
Yeah, I mean, I. I feel like.
My memory is nothing to change, just going up bedrooms made more sense.
Right. They did that. I thought that was.
No, but also the issue that comes up.
But never implemented.
Right.
Yeah, you have someone that was those on itself has eight bedrooms. You know, they started selling who's by themselves, the fee for eight people.
But then they put a water meter on there, well.
I I wouldn't put a water meter on if I'm being honest, but you know, that's that's costly for the town to do, so.
I think we can't do it for this year. This is.
I I just don't think you can do it mid-year. I think he has to come in before that.
Right.
Well, last month, Joe asked us, you know, yeah, so. Joe asked us for, to do it for next year.
And I think the discussion was, we want to have a large discussion on how to build.
Right, yeah.
We postponed that, yeah.
Yeah, because. Next year would be next fiscal, next fiscal year, not.
It would be the next bill.
Next bill, yeah.
Would be next March twenty-four.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, the the board can, you know, reject this current bill, but you know, let them know that. We're considering going forward and making a change the next phone cycle.
Do we want to do this now and have him and Joe come back next month?
I think it's your conversation with the board, how you want to.
Yeah, I I think we just. Reject it for now and and to come up with a better plan.
I guess my thought is, if their request is coming in when we haven't changed it. I don't have a problem with processing it now that we're kind of understanding.
This bill is for the. Fiscal year starting.
Well, Joe asked us for next bill, he's asking us to abate. I agree with the point that we shouldn't abate something that we're, you know. Planning on. But if our rules are currently by occupancy. I mean. But.
His change, at least the present one, the change wasn't such, I mean, his, his wife died three or four years ago.
Oh, Badalana's?
Yeah, so, you know, I I.
And and I don't know what he paid last year, so it's hard to.
I see, yeah.
If he's been, I mean, she did die three or four years ago, so under our current. Guidelines, he's being incorrectly billed, right? So then I think. In that case, we approve.
Yeah, but then that opens the door for.
No, if we've been incorrectly billing someone, which we have in his case, because he's a single person, and that's. The guidelines that we're using right now.
Yeah.
Then.
And I think you correct it for the next.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we're gonna, you're gonna end up with a budget shortfall, have all these people being corrected in the middle of a, of a budget year. You know, we budgeted, we usually be based on these numbers. And.
So who who is it, whose responsibility is it? It's it's the homeowner's responsibility to keep us informed of occupancy?
I mean, that seems fair to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So the the issue does come up as we discussed that, as you said, when someone leaves the house, they're very willing to tell us it goes down. They don't tell if someone moves in.
Right.
Yeah.
Why the discussion going to bedrooms? You know, probably it's something we should put on the agenda.
So I think, I guess. I can't think of Joe's last, is it Carol?
I don't know. This will be a lineup, if we approve. Reducing this bill is going to be a line of people here next month.
Well, I think what I was going to suggest is going back to Joe, whatever's, I can't think of his last name. From last month and William for this month, to approve for next cycle, but prove it now. I don't think he's complaining about.
We don't, we don't know how the bills are going to go out yet. I think if we know, we don't know if it's going to be bedrooms, it's going to be occupancy. It can't be occupancy. Because like Susan said, everyone that has ten kids is going to come down and say, there's only one person living in the house. There's going to be a way to 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 figure that out, and I don't think we should make decisions the next fiscal year. Without knowing what, how we're going to do this.
I don't totally disagree. I just think if the rule, if the rule is the rule.
But what if it changes?
Well.
What if it goes to two bedrooms?
I know, but what if the speed limit changes?
So I, I recommend it, so we have plenty of time before the next bills go out. Almost another year, I think it's February when they go out. So I don't think we need to make decisions, a recommendation to the board, we don't need to make any decisions today. Or the next week of how we're going to bill next year. Um, I think we can decide on this case here, if we want to. Allow a payment on 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 this single thing in front of us and have a decision on that and then have a larger discussion about sewer. Billing uh, for next year on a follow-up agenda.
Yeah, no, I agree. I I can't, because Susan's right, if we. Approve this one is, it's going to be a line out the door and. Everyone's going to be a single occupancy.
Yeah. Anyway, he could have come to us sooner, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So we could just tell him that going forward, it's noted that it's a single occupancy.
We don't know till we decide how we're going to build a sewer.
Right, I mean, we can note it as a single occupancy.
But we can note it for now.
We can note it's a single occupancy now.
Right.
But.
It may change if you decide to change.
If we change how we bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Once, once he's clearing that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's fair.
But I mean, I don't know.
And the same thing would go for Joe.
Yeah, for next year.
We can note that he's single occupancy, and if the rules change, then the rules change.
Yeah.
This is a very problematic system.
It is.
It is.
It does, doesn't sit, sit well with me that according to our own guidelines, he's been billed incorrectly.
I don't think this can be our responsibility.
I I I get, I totally get that it can, but it still doesn't feel like quite the right thing.
Yeah. Do we need a motion on these then, or can we just note that they're single occupancy?
Well, we have to make a motion not to approve this.
Okay, so motion to deny.
Motion to deny the request from William Belling, you know, uh, reducing to a goal.
Mid-text year.
Yeah, right, mid, mid, mid-text year.
With the note that we will change the occupancy going forward for the upcoming text year. Unless we change.
Uncomfortable with that part, but.
We change her, if we change her. No, we change the way we bill, but currently aren't, so.
Yeah. Alright, so motion's been made, is it?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Curry, name's Jill Curry, it's right in the minutes.
Doesn't bother you, Jay, wasn't it?
Yes.
You couldn't sleep.
Yeah, I. I think since we had this exact same discussion next month, do we mind? Um, just noting. That Mr. Curry is a single occupancy going forward.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? I don't think we need, even need a motion.
No. Someone's just going to let.
Okay, perfect. I think that's the fairest.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Uh, but yeah, the rest of the minute, the minutes look fine to me.
Um, the only thing I remember is I thought we asked um. Ms. Oldenburg to produce a letter from.
Oh.
The condo association saying she could only keep, only have one person in the building.
So, so approve the minutes with the addition that we had requested Ms. Oldenburg to produce a letter. From Heritage Condo that she can only have one person in her unit.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
You'll have to get Carrie, because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, Carrie, can you?
Yeah, I'll second, yes, I'll second.
Thanks, motions are made, seconded, all in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
And. And one abstention and to adjourn.
So.
And.
Yay. Aye.
Aye.